Ready? I'll call the meeting to order of the Natrona County Commission Tuesday, January 5th. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Millen.
Here.
Commissioner Bertollio.
Here.
Commissioner Kaufman.
Here.
Commissioner North.
Here.
Attorney Henry.
Here. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. We'll do that first.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, undebted, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We missed Forrest. He usually always started that off. Okay, we have elections of Chairman and Vice Chairman. Is there any nominations for Chairman?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Paul Bertollio, Commissioner Bertollio, for Chairman.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay, Paul Bertollio has been nominated for and seconded for Chairman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Mr. Chairman, now I'll open it up for the election of Vice Chairman. Is there any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I move Commissioner Brooke Kaufman's name for Vice Chair.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Any other nominations? It's been moved and seconded to elect Brooke Kaufman as Vice Chairwoman. Is that right?
I think so.
Okay.
Madam.
Madam Chairwoman.
Vice Chair.
Okay. I'm not going to say anything. It's been moved and seconded to elect Madam Chairwoman, Brooke Kaufman.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. And you can, I'll just pass this down to you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Without further ado, the Chair entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or discussion on any item? There being none, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, we have public hearings. I now declare the public hearing open for the consideration of CUP 20-12, a request by Pacific Corp. Doing Business as Rocky Mountain Power to permit the Gateway Extention S, I don't know what that means, Segment D1 Transmission Line Project in the southwestern portion of Natrona County. The hearing will be conducted in accordance with state statutes, rules of the Natrona County Commission, and other applicable laws. I would ask those individuals who wish to address the Commission to approach the lectern and state your name and address. At this point, we would ask for a staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, we have an application by Pacific Corp. Doing Business as Rocky Mountain Power, and the applicant is proposing to construct, operate, and maintain approximately 118 miles of overhead transmission lines that would run from Converse County down through Carbon County. The project's purpose is to provide existing and new renewable generation sources to meet the growing customer needs, ease transmission congestion, and improve the flow of electricity through the Western U.S. The project is located in the RAM zoning district throughout its entire length in Natrona The project crosses private lands, federal lands administered by the BLM and the U.S. Forest Service, and state lands. There is approximately 195 new transmission line structures that will be installed in the Natrona County portion of this project. Here is the map showing where it runs from Converse County down through the southeast quarter, or corner of Natrona County, and then heads into Carbon County. And along with conditional use permits, there are certain criteria that has to have showings concerning, and we'll go through those right now. Will granting the conditional use permit contribute to an overburdening of county services? The conditional use permit will not contribute to an overburdening of county services. The applicant will work with Natrona County Road and Bridge to obtain the applicable required permits for county road right-of-way access, utilities, installation, and oversized vehicles. Additionally, before using county roads, the construction contractors will document pre-existing road conditions and will return those roads back to their condition after construction is completed. Will granting the conditional use permit cause undue traffic, parking, population density, or environmental problems? The project will have a dedicated access road network for all construction-related traffic. Existing public roads and highways will provide primary access for personnel, materials, and equipment to the project work areas. The proposed finding a fact: Rocky Mountain Power will minimize the effects of project construction activities on public transportation and traffic and provide for public safety. The project has been developed and cited to minimize environmental impacts through compliance with NEPA, the National Environmental Policy Act. Will granting the conditional use permit impair the use of adjacent properties or alter the character of the neighborhood? The proposed finding a fact: The project is compatible with the existing and future land uses. The general area in which the project is situated is in the Ranching, Agricultural, and Mining District. The transmission line development is an appropriate use for this zoning district. The RAM district is intended for predominantly rural and agricultural activities, and those activities can continue in that project right-of-way, grazing of animals, and those types of rangeland activities can still continue. Will granting the conditional use permit detrimentally affect the public health, safety, and welfare, or nullify the intent of the development plan or the zoning resolution? This application was sent to the Natrona County Road and Bridge, Wyoming Department of Transportation, Natrona County International Airport, Wyoming Game and Fish, and Natrona County Fire. The applicant has met with Natrona County Road and Bridge and had conversations about the roads that they'll be using and future issues, if any, and some of the requirements that'll be needed for the county roads. The applicant has also had conversations with YDOT, and the Natrona County International Airport did not have any requirements or have any concerns with the application. Wyoming Game and Fish has made recommendations of the applicant consulting with the BLM and the Forest Service on the new power line, specifically as it goes over the Deer Creek Range. And they're in regards to the administrative closures of the roads that they're looking at constructing in this area, and reducing the impacts to wildlife that may result from increased access. They're recommending new roads created within this portion of the corridor be closed to motorized vehicle use by the public, or allow public use for game retrieval only. The extent of that request is in your packet under the Wyoming Game and Fish. There were no concerns from the Natrona County Fire either. The proposed finding a fact: The project will not be detrimental to the public health, safety, and welfare. The project cited in rural undeveloped areas zoned for agricultural purposes is compatible with the intent of both the land use plan and the zoning resolution. To date, public comment has not been received in writing to the department. At the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, two comments were received from landowners that this transmission line actually crosses. Their concerns were that Rocky Mountain Power wasn't providing them with enough information on the project and how it would affect their properties. I'm happy to say that since that meeting, that Rocky Mountain Power has actually met with the landowners, had conversations, and they can give you an update on how those conversations went. So the proposed motion, at their December 8th Planning Commission meeting, they recommended that the conditional use permit be approved with six conditions. Those conditions are that they obtain a utility license for each highway crossing and an access permit for any new access roads on state highways per the Wyoming Department of Transportation. Two, Rocky Mountain Power consult with BLM and the Forest Service on new power lines located on federal surface that go up and over the Deer Creek Range, and discuss motorized vehicle use in this corridor. Number three, complete a density disturbance calculation tool analysis for construction activity occurring in the Sage Grouse core area as part of the permitting process. Four, work with Natrona County Road and Bridge to obtain applicable required permits for county road right-of-way access, utilities, installation, and oversized vehicles. Five, before using county roads, have the construction contractors document those pre-existing road conditions so that they can be returned to their pre-construction condition when they're completed. And number six was one that was added during discussions with the Planning Commission and in regards to Rocky Mountain Power having a little bit of delay with the FCC. I think it was, no, Public Service Commission, excuse me. So typically, a conditional use permit is good for 12 months after the date that it's approved by the Board of County Commissioners to at least start some type of activity associated with it. We knew going into the Planning Commission meeting that they would be delayed a little bit, so Planning Commission did add an extension on to that which would grant them the permit through January 1st, 2023, they happen to actually start. And that is the presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Chavez. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, I would ask those individuals who wish to speak in favor of CUP 20-12 to approach the lectern.
All right, good evening, Mr. Chairman. Congratulations on your new post. And Commissioners, it's an honor to be here with you this evening. My name is Rod Fisher. I'm the Principal Project Manager for Pacific Corp.'s Gateway Transmission Program. I've had that post since May of 2007, when we launched Gateway West, 1,000 miles across Wyoming and Idaho. And I can tell you, it's been a fascinating journey getting federal permits and state permits. And I think, I'd like to introduce my team before I get into a little bit more. With me tonight, I have Mike Morrissey. He's our local Regional Business Manager with Rocky Mountain Power, based in Casper. We've got Charles Hutchinson from Power Engineers. And Charles, we've contracted with Power to prepare our CUP applications. We actually are obtaining 11 right now on this project and an associated project, making good progress. And then we have Mark Johnson, who is our contract right-of-way agent, who's actually working with the landowners. And I think what happened during the Planning Commission discussion, we had about an hour-long detailed conversation, a couple of landowners expressing some frustration. And I certainly understand the frustration that they had. The project's been underway since 2007, and, you know, we took eight years to get our federal permit for the Wyoming portion of Gateway West. And the landowners are rightfully wanting to know, how's this going to impact my land? And, you know, when are we going to start negotiating an easement? And as a regulated utility, we have to make sure that our timing of when we invest in new large infrastructure, we're currently launching another round of over $3 billion of investment, hopefully here in Wyoming, and part of that is transmission. We need to go get permission from our state regulator, the Wyoming Public Service Commission, and they delayed setting a scheduling order for us. When we submitted this CUP application, we anticipated having the Public Service Commission approval by the end of 2020. They barely established a scheduling order right before Thanksgiving, so that delayed our in-service date out until the end of 2024. And that's what led to the discussion around this condition number six, so that we didn't have to come back and ask for a formal renewal of the CUP. Let's just be upfront with it right now and see if we can accommodate that. And so we appreciated the Planning Commission's, you know, assistance there in adding that Commission. And we appreciate the staff's review of the application. It's a pretty substantial application. We tend to go a little bit overboard, I'm afraid to say, but we want to make sure that we come out of the gate with good positive findings of fact where we can comply with Natrona County zoning ordinances, and I think we've met that, and the Planning Commission and staff have agreed that we've met that bar. So I think one of the other things, since the Planning Commission meeting back on December 8th, you know, I had the opportunity to discuss with all landowners out in the hall after the meeting, and committed to them that we would have Rocky Mountain Power employee, right-of-way agent contact them shortly thereafter, which that did happen. And then after that, what followed was Mark Johnson was setting up individual meetings with the landowners that actually had surveyed exhibits and an offer package. So it takes a while, once we pull the trigger on a large project like this, to get all of the cadastral land surveys done, all of the easement exhibits appropriately prepared. And that's what the landowners were frustrated with, is they hadn't seen that precision on how the project's going to impact their land. And we've, Mark has had the opportunity to meet on-site with the three landowners that were here, actually, two of the three that were here in December. He's got a meeting tomorrow afternoon with the third one, and formal offers are being made to the other landowners in Natrona County as well. I do want to point out, early on, we had some confusion with Jim Price and the alignment on the Miles Land and Livestock property down in the southern part of the county. We worked out with that landowner many years ago, when we actually completed the routing for the project, back in the 2008 to 2010 timeframe. That landowner expressed some concerns due to the geology and the terrain in that area. He didn't want to have the new line west of the existing line that's out there. And so we worked out through an engineering solution where we're going to basically swap positions. We'll do kind of a cut-over, if you will, and put the new alignment for 10 miles or so on the east side of the existing alignment, and then shift back over to the west. So we were taking advantage of some terrain opportunities, and those are the kinds of issues that we work very successfully with the landowners to try and resolve early on. And now I think we're just getting to the point where we're actually, you know, giving formal offers and starting that negotiation process, and I have, you know, all optimism that we'll be very successful on that front. So with that, we're here to ask for your approval tonight of our conditional use permit for the Gateway West project, the Segment D1 portion through Natrona County, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Could I just get your address for the record also?
Yes. 1407 West North Temple, Suite 250, Salt Lake City, Utah, 84116.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Fisher?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Henry.
Thanks for coming tonight, and you laid out, you really answered a lot of the questions that I had. One specifically is, I'm glad that you worked out a deal with Jim Price and Miles Land and Livestock. They have a feature out there they really want to protect, and so I appreciate you doing that. The other one is, and you mentioned it, and it was up here, the DOT had kind of a concern about being the last one to know about some changes, but you've contacted them, and they know what's going on now.
Right, and our engineers fully understand what the YDOT requirements are now. They made the same kind of conditions for our Gateway South project, which isn't in Natrona County, but goes down through Carbon and Sweetwater and down into Colorado. And they've made the same type of comments on the Carbon County CUP as well, so we're well aware of that. We're, we work very closely with YDOT on many fronts, and the same can be said for Wyoming Game and Fish.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Millen.
Thank you for attending. I did have one question on your application. You answered all my questions, too, pretty much, during concerns from the previous Planning and Zoning meeting. I did see one part in your application, though, that I kind of had a question about, is 5.3 In your documentation, you say the structures will be removed and foundations removed to below ground surface. How deep is that?
Many of these structures are direct-in-bid, so they don't have a physical foundation, per se, so there's a drilled hole that is in the range of 20, 20 to 25 feet generally. And there will be some, some of those H-frame structures, these are all going to be steel structures, and some of the corner structures may have concrete foundation, and, you know, should we end up needing to decommission, we'll remove whatever the landowner would like at that point. But many of our facilities, you know, don't typically get decommissioned. They become very critical backbone features of the transmission network across the West.
Yeah, I saw that you put in there that projected life is 50 years, and I imagine it'll go a little longer.
Right, I have no doubt that it'll go longer, but that's what we settled on with BLM in our permitting, and we just thought we'd try and be consistent with the county conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Fisher.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming up. Is there anyone else in the audience wishing to speak in favor of CUP 20-12? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? There being no others to speak in favor, is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in opposition to CUP 20-12? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? There being no others to speak for or against, I now declare the public hearing closed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion to approve CUP 20-12 with incorporation of all conditions and staff's finding a fact.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Millen, seconded by Commissioner North. Any discussion? No discussion? There being no discussion, all those in favor of the motion signify saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We still have Item C on our list. Are we going to simply just table that at this point? Do we need official motion to table it?
Mr. Chairman, that has been tabled at Planning and Zoning, so really, that probably shouldn't have been on for approval tonight, so I think that we could just, I don't know if we need a formal tabling action, there's nothing to consider.
Okay, thank you. Which brings us to public comments. Anyone in the audience wishing to address the Commission? Good evening. As always, could we have your name and address?
My name's Andrea Boyer. I'm at... Sorry. Andrea Boyer, I am at 2116 Omaha Trail in Barnum. And I'll just be brief. I just simply wanted to express my appreciation to this Commission for the things that were said and the actions that were taken in terms of trying to balance the interests and civil liberties of the people, as well as public health, particularly the resolution that was passed, I think, the last meeting. And so my husband's also a business owner. We also, of course, have been impacted, as many people have, and I have a lot of gratitude for your efforts in defending those interests and the well-being of the community. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions for Miss Boyer?
I got a comment.
Okay.
Well, thank you, and I wish they were done when we pass that resolution, but it sounds like the 9th that the governor's going to relinquish some of those. So everything but the mask is going to be taken off that he put on. And I don't have that paper with me right now, but he is going to relax them on the 9th.
Okay, that's awesome news.
So, this has been really tough. This COVID deal is making everybody nuts. And hang in there. Hopefully, it'll get better.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kaufman.
I just want to say it's great to see you here, and thank you for using your voice and having taken the opportunity to give feedback. We always love to hear it, so I just want to say thank you. It takes time and courage to come, and here you are, so good to see you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I would just add a point of clarification. So as of the 9th, the new amended statewide orders, we'll do away with the hour restrictions on bars and restaurants. Gathering sizes will be increased. Fitness groups and so forth will be increased. The mask order, I believe, will stay in place and some of the background orders, but basically, the new orders that were instituted last month will be rescinded.
All right. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming down. It's nice to hear somebody actually give us some positive comments. Anyone else in the audience? All right, no one? Commissioners' comments?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Millen.
Yeah, I'd like to take this opportunity to congratulate Commissioner North and Commissioner actually getting elected, Brooke Kaufman, and then to be elected as Vice Chair. So congratulations on that, and congratulations to you. You got some leadership to try to follow that guy. So, and I'd like to thank Rob Henry for his leadership throughout this time. It's been some trining times between COVID, the hospital, and everything else, and I think this Commission did a very good job considering, and a huge part of that was your leadership, and thank you very much. Other than that, that's about it.
Thank you. Commissioner North, you want to save yourself for last? Oh, let's get you in.
This isn't a roast.
I'm glad. I'm glad it's not. I'm glad to be up here with you guys, and I appreciate everybody that did vote for me. Congratulations, Brooke, too, also, on being elected for both positions, and you, Paul, for being the new chairman. And I just look forward to serving the people of Natrona County the best I can, and I look forward to it.
Thank you. Commissioner Kaufman.
These guys are tough hacks to follow. Like, they're saying more tonight than they ever say, so I feel like all my words are being taken. But number one, I do want to thank Commissioner Henry. Two years ago, I was appointed to the Commission. I had no idea. My first meeting, we were joking about this downstairs before we came up, I was sweating my face off, and it was just this crazy, intense, I had no idea what to do. And you, your leadership and your mentorship and your friendship and your kindness through all that has been amazing. So I just want to say thank you and acknowledge that you have led us through some pretty incredible change at the county in the last two years. So certainly a strong leader, but also, to my fellow Commissioners, we have a great Commission. We've done a lot of good work. I still think there's more to do, but I'm excited to be doing it with you. So Commissioner North, welcome. I look forward to serving with you. Commissioner Millen, as always, you're like a brother to me, so let's do good work. And Paul, I know you're going to lead us into the new frontier, and it's going to be great, so congratulations on your position.
Commissioner Henry.
I have to follow that. Man. Well...
Only tonight, we'll arrange it so she goes last, please.
Well, thanks for all the comments, but, you know, the way I wanted to do it is, all of us have a decision. It isn't just the Chairman. And I think that's important. And we had a good Commission, and I think we will have a good Commission, and so everybody gets along. And congratulations, Dave, for getting elected and being part of this group. We appreciate you putting your name forward, and congratulations. We appreciate you putting your name forward, and congratulations. And Madam Vice Chairman, congratulations on two elections. We're glad to have you here. You make us all look good. So that's great. You guys, and congratulations, Paul, on your election as Vice Chairman, or as Chairman.
I get to stay the same.
Yeah, you get to stay the same as Chairman. And Jim, thanks for the kind words, appreciate it. The other thing I have is just normal business stuff. I'm, as part of my duties, I'm on the CNFR board, and we are blowing and going, and we're planning on having CNFR here. And in June, the rodeos, each colleges, there's some of them that, we won't know the participants of CNFR until just about the end of May. So it's going to be different, but it's going to be here, and that's what we're planning We don't know exactly the amount of people that we can pack into the event center yet, but we're working on that, and hopefully by June, it'll work out in good shape. We don't know about the fly-in yet. I guess that's, we're still up in the air, so. Anyway, thank you, and I appreciate you guys letting me be chairman for a while, and that's it. That's all I have.
All right, thank you. And I will add my congratulations and welcome to First Commissioner North. He's traveled a long way to get there, and the next part about it is, we all know him. I think it's going to be an extremely good commission. Congratulations to Commissioner Kaufman on her election, as well as election as Vice Chair. I look forward to working with you. And I'd add my thanks to Commissioner Hendry. When we started 2020, our big thing was, we're selling the hospital. Somewhere in all this, we forgot, we sold a hospital, probably the biggest thing that would have happened in Natrona County in a decade. And along comes COVID, and we worked to close on the sale of the hospital. At the same time, we're trying to figure out how we're going to keep this building open and keep everything functioning, and the amount of time and effort that Commissioner Hendry spent personally on this was just incredible. And on behalf of not only this commission, I think the citizens of Natrona County have a big thank you. So thank you. And with that, I have not-
One more thing. You didn't get the last word in yet. Mr. Chairman, you know, thanks for the words, but another guy that we really need to thank is our attorney, Eric Nelson. He really stepped up. And you mentioned not only COVID, but the hospital. So while we're doing the hospital deal, which he'd been working on for a year and a half almost, since we found out about it, and then to get COVID thrown in and working on those orders all along and figuring out what to do. Eric, thank you very much. We appreciate that. That's above and beyond, and I'll tell you, a lot of that stuff where you were saying that I was leading, it was him doing the work, for sure. So thank you. Thanks, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, and you're exactly right. I don't think anybody really has an idea, the effort and time and learning. Who sells a hospital? Who learns how to deal with health horrors? It was incredible what Eric Nelson has done for us, and if there was ever a Citizen of the Year, it'd probably be Eric this past year. So with that, if there's nothing else, we're adjourned.